Okay, we're live and ready to go at 6:00 PM. Okay, and I have 6:00 PM. So with that, I'd like to call this study session to order and ask for roll call comes before I read the, why am I spacing on that? My agenda says roll call, and then I'll read the, how about that? Okay. Rebecca Armandaris here, Dion Bracco.
Here.
Zach Hilton.
Here.
Pedro La Romano. Carol Marks here, Fred Tovar.
Present.
Mary Blankley here. Okay, all council members are participating remotely pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number N 2920 in order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus. The meeting is being livestreamed from the city website, cityofgillroy.org, and is viewable on Cable Channel 17 and on Facebook Live. Public comments can be made during the meeting by watching the meeting online and calling 669-900-6833, or logging into Zoom at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash R B dot G Y forward slash O X Y S nine N, and enter passcode 800971. When I call for public comment, press star nine on your telephone keypad, or use the raise your hand icon. All right, this is a study session. We have two items, and the first is objective design standards. Our staff report will be by Cindy McCormick. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Tonight, I will be turning over the study session to our consultant, Mentor Harnish. But first, I wanted to give you a quick update on where we are and where we've been. In recent years, the California Legislature has introduced a number of new and amended laws intended to increase housing production in the state by holding cities and counties more accountable. While this legislation has not always come with funding to help cities, Senate Bill Two provided communities like Gilroy with up to $160,000 in grant funding. The city applied for that funding in 2019, and a contract was executed with the state in May 2020. The city kicked off the process a few months later, including a socially-distanced tour of multifamily housing developments in Gilroy and stakeholder meetings facilitated by our consultant. Before I turn this over to the consultant for more information, I wanted to bring the council up to speed on where Gilroy compares to other cities in Santa Clara County. Two cities have completed their objective design standards, including the city of San Jose, whose standards were approved last month. One other city should be done this May, and four other cities are projected to be done in December of this year. Five other cities in the county are projected to be done sometime between June and December of next year, 2022. And the city of Gilroy's standards should be adopted no later than this fall. With that, I'm pleased to introduce the team for Mentor Harnish, whom you all should be familiar with, since they have been working with us on the general plan update since 2013. Suzanne Brent Gibbons, our consultant, has a PowerPoint presentation to share. Thank you.
Perfect. Well, thank you, thank you, Cindy, for the introduction, and thank you, Mayor and Council. And let me pull up this presentation, hold on one second. And let's go. What screen are you seeing? Are you seeing the presentation?
It looks like it, yes. It's City of Gilroy Objective Design and Development Standards.
There we go. Perfect. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So I just wanted to give you a quick introduction. We should be familiar with, to all of you. We've Mentor Harnish led the City of Gilroy General Plan Effort, which was adopted late last year. We're currently working on a zoning code update and your objective standards update, which I'll go through tonight. As part of this meeting, we'll go over an overview of the process, provide the council a little more background on what objective standards are and how they relate to state law, summarize stakeholder input, and then have an open discussion on your expectations moving forward. So as Cindy had mentioned, the project is SB2 grant-funded. It specifically focuses on expediting multifamily residential housing, since many communities have put up barriers to this, specifically blocking them through design and architectural review. These objective standards will be incorporated into the city zoning ordinance overall. And just to highlight, they only apply to new multifamily projects proposed within the city. So an overview, we started the project just this last fall with a tour of multifamily projects throughout the city of Gilroy of all different sizes, from duplex, triplex projects all the way up to larger projects on the north end and south ends of town. As part of this, we pulled together a table of contents of potential standards that we'll cover as part of this project and have run them by staff. In the winter, we started Phase Two, which was stakeholder interviews. These were a list of stakeholders selected by the planning department, who use the city's ordinances on a daily basis and are currently working on housing-related projects or proposals, just to get their feedback on what types of objective standards are appropriate for the city of Gilroy moving forward, and just to get their thoughts and expectations on this process. Tonight, we're doing our city council study session, where we'll get your feedback. And then this will allow us to have, to go back and refine and review our table of contents based off this discussion in preparation of pulling together the objective standards in Phase Five, which is our zoning code amendments. In Phase Six, we'll look at doing a technical white paper, which will look at what's known as missing middle housing and how we can incorporate that into the city of Gilroy, which looks at different types of multifamily products as well as accessory dwelling units. So holistic approach to different policy implementations a city can take moving forward. In the summer, we will conclude it with CEQA. And then lastly, a successful adoption, late summer, early fall. So what are objective standards? It's a good question to the layperson. So the objective standards are standards that have no personal or subjective judgment to them. They're quantifiable. So instead of saying, oh, this shall have character. Well, character's not quantifiable. That is subjective to whatever the beholder is. So what's driving objective standards? Mainly Housing Accountability Act, SB 35. The state's trying to cut red tape to expedite multifamily housing, because we are in a housing crisis here within the state. Overall benefits of objective standards is that they provide clarity for residents and developers and applicants moving forward. They're clear and concise. They provide more certainty for project approval. And there's an expectation of knowing what kind of projects are going to come forward in the city. So the best way you can address objective standards is by including a set of quantifiable requirements. And these include by right residential development for specific zoning districts that allow multifamily housing. The way that we start to look at these standards is we take past practice that the city has had for its standards and current design guidelines. We look at typical conditions of approval by the Planning Commission and City Council. And then what we do is we tweak those, because those are typically guidelines, and we make them shalls instead of shoulds, and make them quantifiable and enforceable. So the way we're approaching this is we're looking at objective standards for design and objective standards for development. So here are just some examples of different development standards that can be made objective. Your height, 35 feet, that's quantifiable. Your setback, your parking, your landscaping. So we'll take a look at these. And a lot of these are actually going to be updated already in the overall zoning ordinance update. Then we have design. So when we look at design, we'll take a look, we'll take a look at massing, articulation, fenestration, which is the placement of doors and windows, facade, building treatments. So we can start to mandate how much of, how much of the material should be a certain type. Where should windows be placed? All those have to be quantifiable. And what they'll do in the end is they'll form a specific project that the city and the community will be comfortable with, and will know what's moving forward, since these are by right approvals. So this is just to give a little example of, this is a multifamily building, not the most attractive by any means, but this has no articulation, no fenestration, no massing expansive black, blank walls. So what we're showing here is, our intent is to develop objective design and development standards that provide those architectural aspects. So here's an example. This is not saying that this project would go through in Gilroy. I just want to show you a representation of what we're talking about. So here at this building, you can see in these highlighted areas, there are step backs. So the second, third, fourth levels are stepped back from the street. There are different use of materials on the facade. There's use of private open space, balconies, the placement of windows and concealed staircases. Those are standards that we can provide that'll guide and mold future multifamily development within the city. So what are some of the challenges? So objective standards essentially start to take the decision-making process away from decision-makers and allow the projects by right if they meet these criteria, if they meet this criteria. So there's reduced discretion on behalf of Planning Commission or an Architectural Review Board, or even the City Council. There's no public input. If a project comes in and meets every one of these standards set forth, they are just by right and go straight onto a building permit application. The other challenge is basically establishing standards that are realistic, that are acceptable, effective, and then fair for the development community. There is one caveat, though. So we say that they're by right, and they have to meet this, meet all these objective standards. But the one thing to remember here is, if a project comes in and does not want to adhere to those standards, they still can go through a permit approval process, but it will be discretionary. So whatever action the city currently takes for a multifamily project, if there's noticing requirements, all of that would take place. So if they don't want to follow your objective standards, that's the route they would go. So there was a series of stakeholder interviews that we held, and I just wanted to just pull it out, the primary themes that we heard. We can always answer questions if the council has any to dive into these deeper. But the stakeholders were primarily concerned about process changes to make sure that they were streamlined. They were seeking different objective standards for different zones. So for example, high-density residential is not the same as your mixed-use zone. They have different qualities and different environments you're trying to, trying to create, maybe different open space requirements. So we should have different standards for different areas. We should emphasize the quality of life and emphasize neighborhood compatibility, so that these fit within the current fabric of the city of Gilroy. Lastly, focus on sustainability and look into smaller units. So we want to try to encompass all of these that we can through this process. So that was a, that was a.
Just a sec. What, yeah. Can you define a smaller unit? What does that mean?
Sure. So a smaller unit typically is under 1,000 square feet. What you'll find up in, more in the San Jose, Los Gatos, Santa Clara area, they're looking at even smaller. They're called micro-units, 200 to 400 square foot units.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
No problem. So I know I went through this pretty quick, but I want to be able to have a majority of our time devoted to discussion and questions as we move forward. So there are four questions here I wanted to pose to the council, and we have our entire team here today. We have Jim Harnish, who's the principal of Mentor Harnish. We have Ryan Lester, who specializes in objective standards in our office. And we have Gary Orr on our team here as well, who is our project architect, who can answer some of these questions if the council has any. So the main things I want to try to facilitate the discussion tonight is, what type of objective standards are appropriate for Gilroy? Both development, so your setbacks, your height, your density, and your design. Architectural style, roof form, color, building materials, what, what fits best for the community? Also, what type, what design types best represent Gilroy? There's lots of different design types, and the sky's the limit if, if we want to go that route or keep these more simplistic and flexible. And then what are your overall expectations for the project? And are there any other considerations that we should take into account when formulating these over the next few months? So I will hand this over to the mayor. And our team, including Jim, Gary, and Ryan, are here to answer any questions the council may have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council, okay. While the presentation is up, I can't see all the council members. So I might need to have, if we don't need it up, there we go. Okay, then I'll start with hands raised unless council would like me to go to the public first. But if there is council, if there are council questions right now, I'll take those with hands raised, or we'll go to public comment and then come back to council. Okay, I see the council member Bracco's hand raised, and then followed by council member Hilton.
Yeah. I, I, I like the idea of having design standards, so the city can't change the way they do business every time there's a change at City Hall. But what about different neighborhoods look differently? You know, the, the, the project they did at 10th and Monterey would not fit very good over on First Street. I think every neighborhood kind of needs some leadway to have what fits into that neighborhood, because we have older neighborhoods and newer neighborhoods and stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a good question when we get in, when we get into compatibility. When we're talking on a neighborhood level, it's, it's difficult to do, to do that. And the reason is because different neighborhoods, let's say, all have the same zone. So if you have an R1 zone that may be in the Sunrise neighborhood on the north end, well, that's different than Miller Avenue. So it, we can't, we can't take the objective standards and break them down by a neighborhood, because neighborhoods share, share the same zone. One, 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 one way to go about it is to go on a more zone-by-zone basis. So the R1 zones, those typically have single-family homes. So if we're going to allow multifamily housing in those areas in the form of a duplex or a triplex, we can set objective design standards that make them look more like single-family homes. They may not look identical to your neighbor, but the best we can try to fold them into, to the fabric, the better.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, council member Hilton, and then it will be Tovar and Marks.
Thank you, Mary Blankley. Is there, in the beginning, Brent, you had mentioned that this was just going to be for multifamily residential. Is there a reason why we're not expanding this to be residential in general? Like, why, why did you choose to say just for multifamily residential?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. So the, so the state law right now is for multifamily projects that, that have affordable components and meet, meet the criteria. The state isn't, isn't going beyond multifamily at this point to include single-family. So some, some, some communities are going beyond that. But right now, what we're doing is just trying to make sure that Gilroy is compliant with state law. This does include mixed-use projects, because mixed-use projects include a multifamily component. So anything within a mixed-use zone that includes multifamily residential would get wrapped into this.
Okay. So I'm, I'm just going to advocate while we're going through this, and hopefully my council colleagues and staff understand it, that other cities are doing just blanket residential. So this is a chance for us to be able to even give input even further into all residential developments while we're having this exercise and not have to do this later, but include it. And there's many ways where you can just kind of blanket, you know, like you could call it architectural variety, and it gets into what Mr. Bracco said about having like, how one neighborhood will look, you know, different than the other. But I'm hoping that maybe that we can include this as all residential as well. Thank you.
Okay, council member Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello. Yeah, no, I think both my colleagues, Hilton and Bracco, expressed some of the questions or concerns I had. But one of the other things too, and I think it's important for us, again, when we look at standard designs or, you know, sort of the type of quality of designs, again, I think we should always incorporate art into the design. You know, if there's a way of incorporating art, structures, whatever it may be, no matter, you know, what neighborhood it's in. You know, for me, I, I advocate that, you know, wherever we're thinking of building or wherever it's being built, it should look just as good on the east side as it would on the west side. You know, and if there's a way of incorporating artwork in there as well, showcasing that. And again, I think it unifies the community when you do that. So for me, again, I think that's important. But the other thing too is, and just looking at some of the, you know, incredible designs that you just showed us. For me, it's the quality of design, the quality of materials, the quality of structure is very, very important. Because again, I, and I'm sure my colleagues, we want something that looks really, really nice, and it's going to be sustainable for 10, 20, 50 years. And that's something after five years, saying, now it looks like trash, you know. So again, for lack of better words, I just want to make sure that whatever design, it's, it's going to last, and it's also going to be a beautiful design from here on out, if that all makes sense.
No, I think, I think it does. And I think you, you, you bring up some, some good points here. I'll actually pull in Gary Orr, who's our project architect on the team, who can talk to, who can talk to that when we're looking at design standards and possibly requiring different types of materials that weather better over the years. Gary, can you expand upon that?
Yes, you know, this was a, this was a really interesting discussion that came up when we were talking to various community members, developers, and builders, and other architects. And what is a challenge here is it's some materials, if we specify a specific kind of material or another type of material, that could either help to define the quality that we're all trying to maintain. But on the flip side, it could also hamstring the creativity of the design teams to really come up with something that might be unique for the project. So it's a fine balance. It's, it's a delicate balance. There, I'll give you one real brief example. There was a discussion about the idea of using plywood, plywood siding on a building, and whether or not that was considered a, an appropriate material that we should encourage or discourage in the design of a multifamily project. And it, one of the things that came up was not so much the material itself, but maybe how much of the materials used. So a good example with these types of standards is we might be able to say, you know, you can use this palette of materials, but no more than, say, on 60% of the building facade, or no more than 30%. So you don't end up with a building that's all one, one big stucco building, or one big wood building, or something like that, or even one big brick building. So it gives that flexibility. So that's, that's the idea here, is we, rather than limit, we maybe can suggest the quantities or how much of the materials are used, or maybe even where they're, where they should be used.
Right. No, and Gary, thank you for that. Because again, for me, you know, when you, when you think about the design and the quality of design, you know, using different types of materials, quality materials can actually intensify the beauty of, of, of the, of the structure, you know. And I, and we've all seen different new projects or older projects, and you say, man, that thing is ugly, right? Not necessarily in Gilroy, but throughout anywhere, you know, anywhere you go. It's like, who designed that? Why would they build that? You know, and for me, again, I don't want to see Gilroy turn into a city where, you know, we don't take into consideration the quality of designs and the beautif, beautification of what it looks like. Because again, I, I want everyone in our, in our city to say, wow, you know, we really do care what our town looks like. We really do care what our structures look like. And again, if that's using different types of materials, being creative, you know, because again, I, I'm never in favor of an all-concrete building, you know. It's just, it's blah, right? But if you're using different materials and different designs, like what you showed earlier, I just think it brings out more beauty to it, and it makes us a unique town. So I, you know, again, I just want us to take that into consideration.
Thank you. Okay, council member Marks. Oh, okay. I thought, does someone else have a comment before I start? No, I, I, okay. All right.
I think, Karen, I think somebody was from the team was going to say something.
Oh, that's fine. They, they can.
It was just me. This is Gary. All I was just bringing up on that is a very interesting dialogue that came up when we were talking to the stakeholders was whether or not we should limit the material on the siding of a building to just one material. Is that okay? And there was a debate where, oh, no, 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 we want a lot of variety. But then somebody brought up, what about a mission-style, beautiful mission-style house, single-family residence, or even a multifamily building that's all stucco with appropriate detailing and the type of roofing? And they wouldn't be able to do that. They wouldn't be able to do that house if we said you couldn't have anything other than two materials on the siding. So this is the other flip side of that requirement specification. So I thought I'd bring that up. It was a really good debate.
Right. And Gary, really quick, sorry, sorry, Mary, and really quick.
All right, we need to move on.
Yeah, so really, really fast, Gary, and also, when we're talking about the design, also looking at the artwork that we can incorporate, you know, if it's on the landscaping or whatever it may be, I think it's important as well. Okay, thank you.
All right, council member Marks.
Okay, Brent, I have a question for you. As a council, do we have a say in how tall some of these buildings will be?
So, so the density requirements were, were, were laid out in the general plan. I believe the general plan does, does get into height. And the zoning ordinance will get into height as, as well. So as you start to review the zoning ordinance in the different zones, council will have a say as, as we move forward through that process. The one thing you have to take into consideration is if a project comes in and wants to do a density bonus on top of your height, they can exceed your height by X amount of feet. So just because there's a max height, if they have a certain amount of an affordable component, they can exceed that.
Right, I'm aware of that. So maybe that has to be taken into consideration, because I would, you know, personally speaking, I would like to see the buildings blend into the surrounding neighborhood. So if the highest was, say, two floors, I would like to say two floors, knowing that a density bonus could come up and add an extra floor, whatever, you know, whatever that is. And also, what about parking? Do we have a say in suggesting that maybe the ground floor, like you showed the picture of that one building, the ground floor be all underground parking?
That, that is, that, that is something to consider. If, if the council does recommend to make that, you know, a requirement, realize that, that the cost behind that could make projects cost prohibitive. So it, it, it could be something where the council is open to that, and that's, and that's an option a developer can choose, is to do a podium-style parking or parking on the bottom floor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council member Armand Darris, you had your hand raised?
Thank you, Mayor. So while on the Planning Commission, we often reviewed applications for folks who wanted to stray from what our general dictated for, for, you know, different buildings, especially developments that were applying for credits and subsidies, right, for being low-income. And I saw that with a development like Monterey Gateway, as much as we needed the, the housing for affordable, affordable housing for seniors, for low-income seniors and the disabled, they bypassed and were able to get, you know, an exemption for building a sidewalk. And they got setbacks. They got an exemption for the setbacks and the landscaping, right, and things like that. And also the abutments for the sound. And I'm just wondering, what kind of language can we incorporate to, to have like the highest standards, regardless of it being a, an affordable housing unit or not, right, because they're seniors and, and even, you know, even if they weren't, you know, everybody deserves to have the highest standards in our, in our community.
No, that's a, that's a good question, too. So this, so the objective standards is like a fast track. It is, it is exceptions to a degree. So the way that we write these standards, we have the ability to put as much as, as the council wants into it. So if there are specific setbacks that these properties need to meet, if they want to, you know, bypass the, the typical review process, then they will have to adhere to all of these. Jim Harnish, if you, do you, do you want to address some of this a little bit more for the council member that might provide a little more information?
Yeah, sure. The, the theory behind this, the objective design standards, are that they reflect the community expectations for development. The idea behind the entire legislation is that the projects are essentially pre-approved based on what your standards are. So every community has the flexibility of establishing the standards that they are comfortable with. The idea is that then, once established those, the projects can go forward by right, because you've essentially said, if you meet these standards that are acceptable, acceptable to us and to the community, we're good with that. We don't need to look at it. So, so our, this is why we start with what you've essentially approved in the past. We, but it gives you also the opportunity to say, hey, the, we may want some additional, more contemporary aspects of the projects that we may not have considered before. So it's really entirely up to the city, City Council ultimately, about what, how you. Want to see these projects um that are um. Not subject to discretionary review, uh, because this is your discretion right now. This is your. Review to establish these standards. But as Brent pointed out earlier, uh, every project applicant has the. Choice going through a discretionary process if they don't like the standards that you've established that allow uh by right approval.
All right, council member? Okay, um, okay, Councilor Bracco, can I, I'm gonna go and then I'll come, I'll come back to you. And then I would like to go to the public before I do a, another round with. With council members. You know, like everything, uh, most things that we do are, there's, there's double edged sword aspects to it. So the reason we're, we're here, right, trying to get these objective standards for. The multifamily type housing is because that's generally where the most affordability will come. Is in those, that type of housing, not in the single family housing. So what we're trying to do is promote that. And while we want it to certainly blend with our community and be of the highest quality and look great. We also have to be careful that we're not making it cost prohibitive, because then it's going to be counterproductive to the very thing we're trying to do. Which is to get somebody to want to build the kind of housing that we need, that our people need. So I, I just wanted to. I'm hearing an echo for some reason. I'm sorry. Uh, anyway, wanted to go on saying that. Councilmember Bracco, if you want to make another comment before I go to public, to the public, that's fine. And then we'll come back to council.
Yes, um, so I'm gonna see if I understood this right. Um, i- if. If they meet the design standards, it's. A go and they don't have to go through the whole process. And, and they can fast track it. Now, what if they want to make a little tiny change? Does it throw the whole thing out the window? Or is that something that can be approved real simple?
So the way, that, that's another good question. So the way that state laws laid out now. They have to meet every one of those. So if it says your setback must be three feet. And they come in and they want their setback to be a foot or two feet, it differs. So my, so my understanding and, and working on these, you have to meet what it says. You can't deviate from it.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I would just add to what Brent said, you know, these are your standards. Uh, you may uh be able to provide some really limited flexibility to your staff to make a judgment as whether or not the standards. Are met, so that you may say you're um, let's just uh. The, the height is a maximum is uh thirty-five feet. But you may give some flexibility to the staff to say, if you meet this, if, if there's some minor deviation. Two feet or five percent or something like that, that still meets the standards. And we can talk about that. Uh, with staff and bring that forward to you uh as some options for how you formulate these.
Okay, thank you. Suzanne, I'd like to go to the public now to see if anybody's been waiting to make a comment. Yes, if you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone now or raise your hand. Uh, it looks like we do have one comment. Uh, it is going to be from the phone number ending in eight, five, eight, three. I'm hitting allowed to talk now. You may unmute yourself, eight, five, eight, three.
Hello, this is Carolyn Tognetti calling. I, I had the opportunity to serve, uh, to actually go to the stakeholder meeting. And um, I have, still have a couple of questions. I'm gonna start out with my questions first. And uh, one of them is. We're calling this a multifamily um. Uh, de- and design standards. Um, is it just for a multifamily or just the affordable units? Or for all multifamily, even high end? So that's question number one. And then um, the fast tracking by state law, is that only for um? Units that we do not, have not met our RENA numbers. Uh, i- if we've already met our RENA numbers, do we? Still have to fast track a, a, a project? Okay, those are my questions. And then I'm going to just comment on, on some of the things that um we felt were important. Or I felt important at uh the stakeholder meeting. Buildings should not be too massive and kept to under four stories or with whatever's under our um zoning laws. Um, we didn't want to see another huge building like Alexander Station. Um, didn't like a lot of flat roof lines, didn't want to see Lego style block buildings. And long flat walls, like to have those broken up with bay windows, balconies, alcoves. Um, maybe having the two or three different standards for the different parts of town, the downtown, the Gilroy gateways. And in new developments on undeveloped land. And then we do want good quality construction, that's aesthetically pleasing architecture, good exterior building materials. No faux wood, brick or stone, and pleasing colors. Like to incorporate a lot of greenery and landscaping and small plazas if possible in certain areas. Parking would be ideally underground, under the podiums or under the building or on a rooftop or hidden by landscaping. And also places to store bikes should be provided for the apartments. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, Cindy, who would you like to answer Carolyn's questions? Okay, or Brent, or, okay?
I'll, I'll start and then Brent probably jumped in. The whole, the underlying purpose of developing these is to. Enable uh more affordable housing, typically multifamily housing, to proceed with. In, in a more rapid fashion, uh, not have to go through the discretionary review process. So. That means different things to different uh communities. And uh, it's really up to you. There are some communities that have virtually no uh objective design standards. Uh, for multifamily projects. They don't care about the design. They just want the projects built. So you can have a, a pretty broad range of what you choose. But the whole underlying idea is that you want to facilitate some type of housing that can be developed. Quickly and affordably so that you can um uh satisfy. Your, kind of your, part of your obligation to help uh uh facilitate affordable housing in the community. And so the whole underlying purpose is affordable housing. And um. So, uh, by the way, Carolyn, hi, it's nice to hear your voice. Uh, Carolyn was on the. GPAC committee for several years with the general plan. So good to hear your voice. So it's really up to you as to what represents a community. Knowing that there's always the, um, let's see, Gary Orr talks about the fast track or the. Uh, accelerated track to, for approval, but there's always the optional approval for any other projects. So. To respond to your comment about high end housing, Carolyn, the um, this could apply to how, high end housing, but I suspect that most. More uh, more expensive multifamily housing probably will go through discretionary review process. Because of the, maybe the particular expectations for that project. So.
I'll, and I'll.
Brent, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'll just chime in here. So the state law, state law um specifically states that when it has a, an assert, an affordable component. So a certain amount of the units have to, have to be affordable and meet income thresholds, then the objective standards can apply. Um, so some communities just, just have this process just applied to affordable projects. Other communities decided, decided, and there's a few that we're working on. That they want this, they want to expedite all housing regardless of its affordable or market rate. So any project that comes in and meets the objective standards can go through. So it's really up to the city council. Uh, about how you would like that to go forward. Does it apply to all projects, market rate or affordable, or only to affordable components?
Marie, if I could?
Yes.
Also, if I, if I might add, the, the ministerial approvals that Carolyn was asking about SB thirty-five. Only applies to certain affordable projects. And particularly where we have not met full RENA numbers for all affordable, for affordable housing. In addition to that, though, there, the, the objective standards are broader than that because they apply to everything. And the Housing Accountability Act, which we've talked about in the council before, applies to all housing, market rate or other. It doesn't have the expedited ministerial process. However, it still says that the city council cannot deny a project or turn or reduce density. Other than based on objective standards. So the objective standards are very important, in fact, for all housing. Regardless of the actual process that the city ends up using for the approval. So it's a broader concept than just this ministerial approvals. So, although that is part of it.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, so yeah, I, I think that was a, at least for me, that was a more easy to understand answer there. I, I hope, uh. Carolyn got her question answered, because just for the rest of the public, what we are talking about, at least right now, is. Is objective design standards for multifamily housing. Whether or not that gets expanded to all housing is another story. But what we're trying to do is make it easier for the affordable component type housing. To be able to come to Gilroy. All right, I see questions from, so Suzanne, are there any other public comments?
Yes, we do have one more public comment. That is going to be from Basil Romero. I am pushing allowed to talk now. Basil, you may un, uh, unmute yourself.
Hi, how are you? This is Basil Romero, Local three, three, two. I just wanted to know if this work is going to be done by union labor.
Would someone like to, this is, we're not, this, this uh issue that we're talking about. Is not about hiring anyone to do the work. We're just talking about uh standards.
Well, I know, because our, our standards as, as, as union are high standards. And I would just like to know. Uh, if we did move forward with this kind of work, who would be our contractors? Will we be using union contractors? For our union?
It, it would be up to whoever is applying as the developer. It's, the city is not the builder.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, Suzanne, any other public comments? You're on mute.
If you would like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone or raise your hand. There are no additional public comments.
Okay, Councilmember Hilton, followed by Councilmember Marks.
Um, Carol, you can go first if you want to. You had your hand up before me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. I agree with Councilmember Armandaris. She's absolutely right. We have to hold builders to high standards. Because everyone deserves to have a nice place to live. And. I'm, I know with the Gateway Project in twenty nineteen, the developer came and spoke to um. A large group at the library and he showed us an affordable housing unit that they built in Mountain View. It was gorgeous. It had a lot of character. And then we, I mean, it's okay with a building Gilroy, but it's not to any high standards. We have to be really proud of what we put in Gilroy, because we're gonna live with this forever. And what we decide. We need to really talk about, and I guess I'm a little confused right now, because are we tonight going to be giving suggestions on what we want? Where we want um? The group to go on these objective standards, or are we just listening?
No, we're giving some direction.
Okay, good. Okay, then I'll probably be back with a comment. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Hilton.
I had the same exact question. What, what, I'm, I'm ready to start legislating. Let's start throwing stuff out here. So what, what do you need from us? Do you want us to start listing out stuff that we've seen in other design standards? How, how do you want this to go? What's the plan?
Okay, maybe I'll, I'll step in with that then. Are there any other questions from council? Otherwise, that's, let's just do that then. Okay, so we've heard, we've heard the presentation. We've heard the different ideas thrown out. So, um, you know, we, well, well. What we're looking for here tonight is direction from the council as a body, the majority of the council, as to what, what, how, how. What are the real sticky points? What are the restrictive things that we want to make sure become part of our objective standards? That's really what we, what we want. So for example, do you want to limit things to one, to uh? One material or two materials, given that it can cut both ways. Uh, when it comes to stories. I mean, I would think that what we have in the general plan for certain areas is already telling you the number of stories it can be. But if, if within these objective design standards, we can set a different limit on stories, then fine. So council, do you want to take this? I don't know how to do this efficiently. Should we start with height and then materials? Maybe those two things alone will, will get us going?
I, I think so.
Okay, I'm sorry. So Councilmember Hilton, you, you did that, but Councilmember Marks has her hand up. So Councilmember Marks and then Hilton.
All right, I have a question. Refresh, I guess this is a question for Cindy or it doesn't matter who answers. I'll refresh my memory on what the general plan says for building heights. I think that would be a good starting point for us.
Okay, so um. I'm not aware that the, the general plan and Jim, please correct me if I'm wrong, actually gets into heights. However, what it does do is it sets. Density standards and floor area standards. Um, well, for area for commercial. So the density is really going to limit how. Tall these buildings can get, because you can only build so much density on a particular parcel.
I thought like along First Street, there were certain height limits, no?
Yeah, tho- those are zoning code limits, not, uh, but they could be in a specific plan. But typically there's zoning code limits, height, uh, setback. Parcel size are, are typically zoning code related. They're more specific, whereas the general plan. Uh, limits density, how many units to the acre can you? Get, and then the zoning code reflects that in terms of the standards for height in terms of um. Non-residential uses, uh, floor area ratio.
So then maybe what Councilmember Marks was asking is zoning code limits.
I guess, because that doesn't help, because I know our first and Kern Street project is what, four or five floors, right? So I'm gonna throw out something and then I'd like to hear everyone's opinion on it. I like to see us limited to two stories, knowing that there is a signing bonus. So if, so that would take the building height up to three stories. But we'd have to write it in as a max of two stories, because if we say three stories, then they could go up to four stories. So what does everyone think?
Is that an objective design? Standard? Or is this a zoning code amendment or zoning ordinance? I, I, I think we're not differentiating between the two.
Maybe, yeah. Brent, what, what do you think? Or Jim?
Yeah, I'll go back, but the PowerPoint presentation that Brent made distinguished between, and this is kind of uh inside planner stuff, but. Between design standards and development standards. So development standards are height, setback, lot size. Things that you're typically, you're, you have, are very familiar with. In terms of zoning and, and when you've reviewed projects. Design standards are um. Typically topics that have in the past developed, addressed through guidelines. So design guidelines, building color, illustration, roof pitch. Composition. And so we're standardizing, so development standards have been standardized for decades. Design standards are what we're really focused on now, which are those things that have been discretionary in the past. That are now uh being standardized as objective.
Okay, so then the height then would end with zoning? The height would be under zoning?
Yeah, but the design standards, these objective standards will find their way into the zoning code. So they will become part of zoning uh once you adopt them. You, I mean, you, you certainly as um uh council members can change. Uh, the development standard provisions of the zoning code. And as Cindy. Mentioned at the beginning of uh the, this session, we're uh updating the zoning code throughout. So you'll have an opportunity to address the height standards in all of the zoning districts. So. What we're focused on now are these design standards, but we certainly can take your comments and direction for the broader uh zoning code. Update and bring those back to you as ideas as well.
Okay, all right, then, thank you.
I think it would be helpful if we pulled up the slide again. On design standard versus.
Councilmember Hilton, did you have a question? Councilmember Hilton, did you have a question first before? I, I didn't go to Councilmember Armandares yet, but.
Right.
Um, okay, I, I have one question and then, like I said, I'm, I'm ready to get started. But is there, well, no, I mean, I, 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 I agree with what Carol's trying to do. Just lay it out there, what you want to see. And then I assume we're giving direction based on that and input. I mean, I could read an entire section that I read about the way Sacramento did one or Morgan Hill. But it's too much to read it. You have to actually like see it. But is there any will from anybody on council to make this entirely for residential while we're doing this process? Or am I the only one that is thinking that way? So I, I mean, I, I think now is the point for us to give direction to staff if we want to do that. I, I don't want to come back here later on and go through this whole process. We have the money now. We can literally apply this to all residential. That's my first question.
Just to, to answer your question, my, my opinion is, is no. Like I don't want to fast track more market rate housing. I don't want to incentivize that in any way right now. I think we have plenty and plenty in the works. And, you know, given the housing crisis, I think we need to make it as, as easy as possible for our multifamily and affordable housing developments to come into play. Expedite, expedite them if possible.
But this, this won't necessarily give permission or not permission. This is just our standards overall for residential. Unless I'm understanding something wrong, that this wouldn't give any extra perks to anybody, if, if you will, market rate or not.
Yeah, just, I mean, based on the multiple explanations that we heard tonight, that was my understanding that as long as they meet the standards, then it allows the process to move forward and kind of fast tracks it. And anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, but that was my understanding.
No, I believe she is, she is, well, she is, she's correct. But any developer who doesn't want to do exactly what that says, and for single family homes, I don't know that they would, but they could. You know, then they would be subject to what we do today, which is the regular permit process and stuff. But if you're trying to target making it particularly easy and quick and streamlined for affordable housing, that's, that's what this focus is, is on, as I see it anyway. I don't know that it's as necessary, Councilmember Hilton on the other, but I, I hear what you're saying. Okay, I see Councilmember Braco's hand up too.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Hilton because I would like to see the whole process simplified. The developer comes in, the rules are straight. You know, I, I hear so many times developer does one project and he has to go by this set of criteria. And then there's a staff change. Now the criteria has changed. And they hold them hostage and try to make them do all kinds of stuff that has nothing to do with the project they're building. And, and all of that just adds prices, adds to the price of the home. Everything we add raises the price and makes it less and less affordable.
Yeah.
The simpler we make it, the more affordable it actually makes it. So I, I, I'm, I, I'm for doing the residential too. I don't know if we would do it at the same time or, because I think the residential would be a pretty big undertaking.
That's what I'm wondering. Cindy, are you, are you on? Is somebody from the city here who could tell us if there's something that we don't know when it comes to expanding this beyond multifamily residential?
Yeah, so we have $160,000 for this project. It really was, the scope of work is really for the multifamily developments. If we wanted to extend this to single family, we would need a more, more of a budget and potentially more staffing. That being said, there will be some standards that come out of this that we can look at and see if they apply to single family neighborhoods.
Okay, so for purposes of our discussion tonight, we're sticking with the multi, that's what the budget is. So it's, it's the multifamily residential. Okay, everybody? All right, now I still see hands up by Councilmember Braco and Councilmember Armandares. Braco's gone. Oh, everybody's hands are gone. Okay. So then back to just design standards then, never mind height. I know for me, for example, I would rather not see public spaces hidden. So if there are going to be public spaces in these objective design standards, and I certainly hope that there are, that they not be hidden.
Okay.
And, and that's something that we can definitely look at. It's not uncommon for objective standards to address public open space, as in rec rooms or, or lawn area or playground, and regulate private open space, balconies, patios and so forth.
Yeah, my concern just being that you can end up with things happening in those hidden spaces that, you know, are not, are not good for the development itself, for the, for the residents who live there. Okay, I see hands now by Councilmember Marks and Councilmember Braco and then Hilton.
Who do you want going first?
Marks.
Okay, I think what, I think what the mayor's talking about is no donut holes. Is that what you mean? Where when police and fire drive by, they can see right into the building. That's a very.
Yeah, just no spaces where people can do things that they can't get caught, that they are intending to not be noticed doing.
And I can believe that, 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 that's a form of, of CEP TED, so it's crime prevention through environmental design. And we do take that aspect and work that into objective standards.
Very good, very good. That was, that was my comment. Okay, Councilmember Braco?
Yes, I, I think we need to address the parking lot too. Because, you know, that, that, like on 10th Street, that's the worst part of that project is you have to look at the parking lot. And I, I think we do need to have a requirement for some kind of storage unit. So people can store, if you go by 10th Street, you see bicycles on all the, the balconies. That's not where they belong. It, it would be nice if they have a, a storage that they could use either community or however. And I, that, that's all for now.
All right, Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. Would this be an appropriate time just to kind of lay out like my expectations and what I'd like to see? Is that?
I think so.
Okay, all right, so, um, so here's a couple of ones that I pulled out, and a lot of them are dealing with what you all have been talking about. So it's parking, design principles, and it's very, I have very specific stuff. I don't really want to sit and talk about it. But it deals with a lot of like the off-street stuff. So talking about parking and where they're supposed to have parking. Pedestrian circulation is something that I want to see as an objective design. The landscaping in open space is another one that I'd like to see us talk about, including the irrigation and like Mayor Blankley said, the common open space for multifamily dwellings and mixed-use developments as well. The architectural variety, so looking at like the design principles and scale those to characters of the neighborhoods that they're already around. That's another one. The scale and massing and articulation of the building. So like the, we have a property on Monterey Road that's going in that was right next, it butted up against residential on the back. So it required this sort of scaled down effect, you know, to meet that. That's, that's something I'd like to see us be able to talk about. And also the, the stacking of buildings. So if you're going to have like two buildings next to each other, that they don't look the same, they look different. There's some, either different offset or different coloring. So it doesn't look like, like a lot of us, what we're saying is just sort of like two cookie eaters spread out there. I, I'd like to see us talk a little bit about facades as well inside, inside there. And then, let's see, off-street bicycle and pedestrian connections. And this is really where maybe if this is one of the pieces we can pull off and use for residential, I think it's necessary for single family homes. But developing and somehow incorporating off-street bicycle and pedestrian connections, also including a section on complete streets and design elements and how they connect in with the, the rest of the residential environment around them. And then like Councilmember Braco said too, the bicycle parking and the storage. We have standards that are currently already in the, in the city of Gilroy. So I want to be able to clearly have what we expect the bicycle parking to look like and have those objective standards in there. And then at some point, I'd like to be able to talk a little bit more about the electrical vehicle charging stations. Some of this is already being required by the building code. And whether there's objective designs that we can go into on, on how those are laid out as well. Thank you.
I will, I will say, Councilmember Hilton, that about 99% of what you brought up can be made objective, and we have incorporated into other communities of similar size. And the EV parking stations will, will have those standards mandated in, in the zoning code. But if you'd like a cross-reference into the objective standards, we can definitely do that. So it requires and mandates it there too.
Thank you, because that's another one where I'd like to see it going into the residential side. Because this will be something in the future. I mean, there's solar panels on single family homes. You know, being able to convert and actually have the ability for electric vehicles, which are only going to be sold in California in the very near future, they need places to park those. And if we're out of touch with what's going on around the state and we don't build for that, and we don't require that as an objective design standard, even put it in our own zoning ordinance, we're going to, our residents are going to be left behind.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Armandares, and then Councilmember Tovar, if you had a question, I don't see a hand raised. But I'm going to go to Armand, Councilmember Armandares next, and then I'll, I'll ask you.
Okay. Sure. So I'd love to see dedicated, safe parking, adequate lighting, and that includes lighting around the parking areas and the trash bin areas, and that there be adequate recycling. I'm not sure to what extent we can, we can regulate that, but there'd be adequate access to recycling bins, right, and a recycling program there. That there be access that is safe for pedestrians and bicyclists. We often see, like in Monterey Gateway, we don't see a crosswalk nearby. We don't see sidewalk access and those, the folks who live there are far away from, from parks. And so for them to recreate and things like that, they have to travel by car. And also the speed limit on Monterey Street there is on the higher end, right? So for them to cross the, the street there is pretty dangerous. So I'd like to see safe access to pedestrian and bikeways. Let's see, safe entryways. And so some places are gated and then are left to, you know, the gates are left open. I'm not sure how far we can go, but, but if it's going to be a multifamily complex, we don't want a repeat of what happened with Alexander Station where folk, the residents don't feel safe because the gated entry is just left open, right? And so there, doesn't matter that it's gated, doesn't matter that the key is required because the door is intentionally left open all the time by management. So I'd like that. And then in terms of playgrounds and recreation spaces, I know that some, there is a certain amount of footage or acreage required per, per housing unit. I'd like to see that, how to a high standard, you know, if the state has a higher standard than we do, I think we should go after that. And then that it be accessible for, for children and young people of all abilities. Because we know sometimes kids that are on the autism spectrum or are, have physical disabilities, don't have access to, to the right kind of playground that they need. And so I'd love to see that incorporated.
Those are great comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, see, that's why I should have spoke before my fellow Councilmember Armandares because she must have been reading my notes on that one. No, I, I just want to echo everything she just said.
You wish.
All the very, very important points, you know, and again, sort of the recreation, the safety of, of, you know, sort of the design and stuff. But again, going back to the quality and also incorporating, you know, local artwork or whatever it may be to really connect the community. And again, I'll, I'll say it again, just sort of that how the quality and the beautification of what it looks like. You know, we want, no matter what the project is, we want it to be something that we're proud of. And, you know, like Carol and I are saying, you know, we're going to live with this for the next 50, 60, 70 years. And I don't want five years from now to be able to look at a project and to say, wow, we really screwed that one up. You know, but the other thing too, and I think Councilmember Braco mentioned this earlier. You know, when you look at the 10th Street project with bicycles and things hanging over the, the balconies, you know, it was my, and I'll give an example, it was my belief when we spoke with them, part of the opening up, they said that they would monitor that, you know, that that would not happen. And I, I knew that wasn't, I knew that wasn't true because it's happening. And I think we need to hold folks accountable for whatever it is, you know, the design and, you know, the requirements. Because again, I, I think we have a really good opportunity here moving forward. I think Gilroy's done a great job over the years, but I think we have, we have an opportunity to even do better with the type of quality of design and sort of the safety and the recreation destiny, you know, recreation spaces for the children and stuff like that. So again, I think we're all speaking the same language in regards to what we want, but just sort of, you know, wanted to share my thoughts on that as well. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hilton, before I come to you, I wanted to ask, are there negatives to rooftop, common area rooftop areas? Is that something that is popular? And, you know, does it work with, with the affordable kind of? Is this something to address in these design standards, or is that pretty much proven to be, I don't know, that something bad comes of it?
Well, I, 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 I think I'll start and I'll let Gary jump in here since he's the, the architect. I'll, I'll say, it's, if, if you want to allow something like that, then we can have the flexibility where, where you can have it, but it's not mandated. Just realize with, with rooftop decks and stuff like that on multi-story buildings, sometimes you deal with noise and sound issues with adjacent properties. So that's just one, one thing to consider. And there's also, sometimes there's privacy issues as well.
Yeah, right.
I don't know if you can add if there's anything architecturally.
No, that, that's enough. Actually, that, that answers the question. That's, I just wondered what, yeah, wondered. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mary Blankley. Another thing that I actually, I liked, and Brent, I'll, I'll ask you if you've seen this in other cities. The city of Morgan Hill has a, when we're talking about like onsite recreational amenities, they have a tiered approach. So what they do is they've come up with three tiers. You know, the first tier might be something like shuffleboard and park benches. Tier two would be even greater, like, you know, picnic barbecue areas, clubhouses, you know, dog parks, and then number three would be like your bigger, you know, community gardens, that kind of stuff. And then what the developer has to do is go through and just say, hey, if you have 60 to 50 units, you have to pick two things from tier one and two things from tier two.
Yes.
I like that approach because it shows what, what you want as a community. But at the same time, it makes them pick through there. So, you know, I don't, I don't know if you're able to reference that or something, but I think that's something that, 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 that is good to have.
Yeah, well, I can say that we're doing a similar tier approach for the town of Windsor and Sonoma County. And for some cities in Sacramento region, we have like a pick, like a you pick list of amenities. So there's a list of amenities and it says, pick two out of the 10. And the, it's up to the developer to choose what best fits for their development.
I like that too. That's great. Okay, Councilmember Armandares, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to say that we approved on the, on the planning commission a couple of years back. We approved an affordable housing unit, units on Monterey Street down by, between Lyman and Los Animas. And they will have a common area on the rooftop and the design where it was, yeah, it was beautiful.
I remember that.
I, I, I support those. I, I like the idea of incorporating them.
Okay. Have we given you enough direction?
No, I mean, there, there, there's a lot of feedback. I, I, I think what, what, what all the council members have contributed tonight gives us a clear path forward. We definitely see where we're going now. And I think this gives us and staff the ability to collaborate and come up with, with a draft product for everyone's review.
All right. Very helpful. I just said, this has been very helpful. We really appreciate the feedback and direction.
Yes.
Okay, then we will move on to our next item.
Perfect.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. All right. Item two, introduction to the city's five-year pavement management program. And this staff report will be Gary Heap, and if neuron, neuron is here too, okay, start with Gary.
Did, Jimmy, did you want to do any kind of lead in on this, or you just want me to start?
Did Jimmy, did you want to do any kind of lead in on this or you just want me to start?
Well, sure. Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. You have a pretty robust presentation tonight about the streets in Gilroy, and none of this will be a surprise to you. One thing that you will not see a lot of is really good financing solutions. We don't have idle money sitting around, and so anything that we are able to put towards streets. Will most likely come from another fund or another revenue source. And that's what I, I, I don't, I, I want you to be aware of that we can, we, we have. Other times to work on that, but tonight is really about some philosophies on how the streets will be analyzed and repaired with the current money we have. So. Just wanted to give you that caveat that we are aware and you are too, that we don't have money laying around to put a lot more money into our streets. But with that, I know our public works. Korea have been waiting to get back to you and show you some options that we have for what we do with the money that we currently have and, and then look. Looking forward to what we can do to come up with alternative funding sources. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Gary. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated. So this is the first of what we hope will be a few meetings with the council to really walk you through. To the development of a paving program, a five-year paving program. And so what we have this evening, we have a number of slides that are provide you with a lot of background. And at the end, we'll focus you on some specific feedback that we need from you to be able to take away. And then bring back the next phase of this five-year paving program. So tonight's agenda. We're really going to go over the goals of the study session on the next slide. We're going to talk about the city's pavement management system as a whole. We're going to talk about PCI and pavement condition index a little bit and what that means and show you some examples. Payment management maintenance strategies and the three different types of strategies that we have at our disposal. We're going to talk about treatment options. Alternatives for that five-year plan, because there's a number of things that we need input from you on that will help drive this five-year program. Funding availability, what we have to spend and what we're going to need help on. And then again, focus you on some very specific council discussion items to get direction to help us move forward. So the goals for the study session are pretty straightforward. We're going to provide you an update on our current pavement condition in the city's roadway needs. And then gather input from you this evening to help us again develop that five-year paving program. So when we talk about streets here in Gilroy, we have two hundred and seventy lane miles of paved roadway. That equates out to roughly one square mile of paved service. That's a lot of hardscape to, to go ahead and maintain. That has a total value of two hundred and twenty million dollars when it comes to infrastructure value. And then the table there you see on there, on the slide in front of you really has the, the listings of our charials, our collectors. Our residential and local roadways and the breakdown of each of those. So I think the next slide starts neuron's presentation. He has a few slides for you and then I'll come back at the end.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Thank you for the introduction, Gary. As Jimmy mentioned, some of these informations are background informations that you have seen before on the State of the Street presentation back in early twenty twenty. And again, like Gary mentioned, we have a very large network. And in order for us to manage this network of such a complex assets, we need something called a payment management system. What a payment management system is, it's a set of tools, philosophy that is packaged into a software. In this case for us would be Streetsaver. That help us manage and recommends maintenance activity based on a set criterias that can be funding or PCI level. Our payment management system or payment management approach really built on three components that you see here. The first is the assessment of our payment conditions. That is something that we do every two year with the system of MTC. And we then with that information, with that baseline information, so we then develop an optimized treatment plan to go ahead and maintain that systems. And then followed by the third. Process that is to re-measure that progress and see if we achieve that goal. And then that process will go into a cycle. So the first item on this is the assessment of our payment, correct, of our payment conditions. We do so by using a measuring criteria called PCI. That is short for payment condition index. The payment condition index is basically a metric or scale of zero to one hundred. That is how we grade our payment quality. As you can see on the pictures here, these are all the payment conditions that is represented by PCI. From this worst conditions here, which is what we classify as fail or very poor road that has a PCI of zero to twenty-five. And then we have this major alligator cracking here, but does not fall as previous picture. This is what we classify as a poor road, which has a PCI of twenty-five to fifty. The next one, once you start seeing some block cracking and stuff and distress on the pavement, this is what we call from. At risk to fair, which has a PCI of fifty to seventy. And of course, on the right-hand side, this is our. Road that is in good condition or excellent condition when it was just built. Now, the reason why we also subcategorize it into the four category you see here, the very poor, poor, at risk and excellent, it's. To deal with the different type of maintenance efforts or maintenance treatment that has to go with each PCI. For instance, road that are in good conditions or excellent, we typically do a preventive method on these roads. Versus road that are really in really poor fail conditions, then we have to resort into other more expensive treatments such as reconstruction. So with that, I kind of want to direct your attention to the graph below. This is what we call a payment deterioration curve. All of our asphalt payments actually. Kind of follow this deterioration curve. It would start at a PCI of one hundred up here and then it slowly deteriorate. So on that first fifteen years of life, that payment will go from zero to seventy. However, in the next five to six years, that payment really started to degrade. This is what we call the inflection point. So once you fall from that seventy into the sixty, fifty category, the payment quality really drop. And this graph you can see, it could drop as much as forty percent in its quality in that just few year. And then it's starting to plateau out. And as mentioned before, each one of these category has its own. Applicable treatments and it also has these costs, you know, some of the. Parentive maintenance that we do on our good street can average somewhere between three dollars per square yard. Versus if you let it drop downs to a category four or fail conditions, that can cost upward of eighty dollars per square yard. And another concept that I also wanted to point out to is remaining service life. Remaining service life is also another metric that being used outside of California and other agency. And the reason why I'm bringing this up too is that remaining service life is another metric that actually relate payment. To the actual year and age of the payment itself versus PCI, it only directly relate to the quality. Next slide. So aside from PCI, our segment, the way we actually go and assess our payment is by segment. The reason why we segmentize our road is that it can be based a group into a similar conditions. And then that, that way a maintenance strategy or maintenance treatment can then apply to those similar segments. So that way we can. Break them out into a more sizable projects. So right now in Gilroy, out of the two hundred and sixty-eight lane mile that we have. That's totaled to about seven hundred and forty-six segments. As mentioned, we do this assessments on a two to three-year basis. That is with, with assistance from MTC through the PTAP program or the Pavement Technical Assistant Program. This assessments really give you a snapshot in time of what our payment condition is at that point. So this slide kind of show you, you have, many of you may have seen this, this is our payment condition or average payment conditions over time. As you can see, we started this back in two thousand and twelve and the last one we did was in the summer of two thousand and nineteen with the final report presented to you in January of two thousand and twenty. As you can see, we started originally in two thousand and twelve at a PCF seventy-six and currently we are at sixty-two. And I kind of just want to point out this little anomaly here. A lot of time in, in under MTC contract, every two or three cycles, we have to switch consultant. So when we do switch consultant, there are usually about one or two different in the way that they look at this. They all follow the same standard, but as they are going out and rated the street, sometime there are a little bit of discrepancy between that, but. They are radically from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and twenty, you would probably see almost like a linear, linear deteriorations in our payment condition. So as our payments deteriorate from time from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and twenty, the cost to maintain those payments also goes up. As you can see, when we are at a higher PCI at seventy-six, our yearly or annual cost to maintain our road at that level was one point three million dollar. And as we drop in an overall PCI, that number significantly goes up. In, in two thousand and twenty, you've probably seen the report is that to maintain our road at sixty-two, we need approximately three and a half million dollar annually to maintain it at sixty-two. The next slide here is talk about deferred maintenance costs. So really what deferred maintenance costs is it's a cost of maintenance and rehabilitation work that should have been completed to maintain roads in good conditions. But had to be deferred due to funding. As you can see in two thousand and twelve, when we had a PCF seventy-six on deferred maintenance cost was nine point seven, four million dollar. Currently, our deferred maintenance cost is thirty-three million dollar. PCI, overall PCI of the city is one metric to look at it. But however, you know, it does not tell a complete picture. What you see also on this graph is the breakdown of how we come up with an overall PCI of sixty-two. This show you that forty-three percent of our road are in good conditions. Twenty-seven point nine percent of our roads are actually at the at-risk or fair conditions. And twenty-two point one percent of our roads are at the poor conditions. And we currently have six point nine percent of our road that are in very core or fail conditions. And as we were presenting different scenario, we'll also introduce this different graph and show how that. Breakdown actually progressed through the different funding scenarios. This also tell you pictures, this is graphically from our GIS will show you what our PCI seventy-six in two thousand and twelve looked like. Over here on the left and what our road networks look like on the right today with an overall PCI. And that's why, you know, when you see a PCF sixty-two. And you think that our road is fair, you can then kind of look at that breakdown and tying that to this whole network picture and see that the. Enormer, enormous increase in the yellow and orange and red segment from when we were in two thousand and twelve. And the next slide is a lot of time is kind of want to see where we are in comparison to our neighbor. You have seen this graph in two thousand and nineteen when we did this, Gilroy had the PCI of sixty-two. Quite frankly, we have the lowest overall PCI. In, in our area. Again, PCI doesn't really tell a, an overall PCI at one point in time does not tell the complete story. Here, what I want to show you is actually the trend line and see for some of the city that are similar in size in term of payment asset management, right? In this graph, you will see about two, three of these jurisdictions, Union City, Los Altos and Gilroy, we are the only three that are trending downward. Other organizations actually starting was trending downward, but then are starting to pick back up. I think one of the kind of interesting case study that we kind of look at is Orinda. They originally start in two thousand and fifteen at a PCI of forty-eight. And they are in two thousand and eighteen was able to bring their PCI back up to seventy. And I believe looking at their report in two thousand and nineteen, their PCI was expected to be at eighty-five. And they really did some creative things and in their financials to bring that up. Into the higher PCI category. And we can go into detail if you have any questions on that later on. So now that you understand where we are, where we've been and what our trends mind is like, we can then go on to the next phase, which is developing an optimized treatment plan. We have, so when we are looking at that, I want you to focus on the toolbox of what can we use to actually maintain our road? So we break those two block into three different category. One is the preventive. This treatment is really for the road that are at a PCI of seventy and above. And it's men, it's kind of like in comparisons to doing oil change on your car to keep it running at optimal conditions. And really extend the life of that asset. In this case, our typical preventive maintenance are slurry, micro-surfacing, chip seal, crack sealing. And it has the ability to extend a payment life by five to eight years. And it also the least expensive out of the group. The next category, this is more for the yellow and kind of orange street that you've seen, it's called rehabilitations. It's a little bit more expensive than the preventive. It's usually our cape seal, thin overlay, grind and overlay. Or a colon place recycling. This usually has the capacity to extend the life of pavement by eight to twelve year. The last category, these are the most expensive and these are the ones that meant to address road that have failed or already in a very poor conditions. It has the capacity of basically rebuild the road and bringing a new life to it, which give you a life extensions of about twenty to twenty-five year. Typically, these are full depth remove and replace. It can include a complete removal of the asphalt. Removal of the base rock underneath and also redoing the subgrade if that's required. So to compare these treatments, because a lot of time we do get questions from our residents in term of, well, how come you don't address a lot of the failed streets? And, and why not just do reconstruction, seeing it's giving you that twenty-five year life's, life's extension? Well, in really in order for us to compare all these treatment on a level plane field. We really have to start looking at them on in what we call an equivalent annual cost. This basically, you know, for example, on a full depth. Remove and replace, although it is giving you a twenty-five year life extension, the cost per square yard for this is also extremely high. So if you break down sixty-eight dollar per square yard divided by twenty-five year, really the cost of life extension that you paying is two dollars seventy-two cent per year. To, to repair that road. And versus if you were to do a preventive treatment like a slurry seal or cape seal. Although it only extend your life about seven year, you know, at the cost of four dollars per square yards, the annualized cost of that is fifty-seven cent. So to put that in a graphical forms, you can see that a preventive treatment cost is really down here versus. You know, when you leave it to go into rehabilitations and reconstruction, that cost can jump up. Three to four times, even five times higher than that of preventive method. Now, with an understanding of the, the treatment toolbox, we can then talk about strategies. There's really three main strategies here when it comes to the different approach and fixing our road. One is the Streetsaver or what we call an optimized approach. That optimized approach is really is to fix, spend a, a lot of our fundings fixing the road that are in good condition, keeping those in good conditions. And then any excess funding that we have will fall down to the rehabilitations and then so on, so forth, all the way down to the reconstructions. The, the second approach is called the worst first approach. This is really to concentrate on the worst street. The highest volume and the lowest PCI and then disregarding, you know, all the, the road that are in good condition. So basically this focuses on. Reconstruction rather than any surface treatment. And then the third is the blended, which is really a combinations of maximizing the preventive treatment. And then with whatever excess fund that we have, starting to save those up or put that into a reconstructions of the road that has failed. And I'll go into detail on each one of those strategies in a minute. The first approach, like I talked about, this is a Streetsaver or the optimized approach. This is really the focus on keeping a good road in good conditions. Because it is the most cost effective, as you can see from the equivalent, equivalent annualized cost earlier, the cost per year on preventive treatment for these scenarios is the cheapest. And it's allowed for, it has, it does, has room for our engineering judgment and input to put in things like a local constraints based on. Traffic usage based on many other factors. But really just kind of like the presentations you heard only from the first item is give us the opportunity to look at this objectively. To create a criterias where then we can follow and create an optimized plan for a street. Streetsaver, this, I pulled this directly from the Streetsaver website. This is how Streetsaver work in term of their progressions. It really followed the three approaches that I explained to you earlier. Start with inventory and assessments. And then looking at the funding availability and developing the, the treatment plan. And then reassessing that and see if we meet our goal. And that's how Streetsaver works. There's a lot of agency that are using Streetsaver currently. I think it is mandated for us in the Bay Area to be using Streetsaver. But they do have other customer outside of the Bay Area and other states and even in SoCal as well. And one thing that I do want to kind of take some time and explain to you is talking about how Streetsaver prioritize roads, you know. There has been a con, perceptions out there that it is a black box, it's a software that you put something in and then magically on the other end. Spit out the name of the roads or the, the, the treatment that we need to use. It actually a, a little bit of a complex algorithm, but I kind of break it down here to more like simple forms where it can be understood there. In theory, this is basically how Streetsaver calculated. It's something called a cost benefit value. It take into account the traffic, the, the volumes onto the road and how the load impact the road. And then constraint factors that can be anything from geometrics, usage and stuff. And also take into consideration the life extent, extensions of the treatment that you are one, that you wanted to put on that road. Of course, it takes into consideration the unit cost and the PCI of that road. So for this one, I, I know it's a, it's a little bit of formula, but I want to give you an example down below. So road one and road two basically has the same usage, the same classifications. It has the same ADT of five thousand vehicle per day. And we assume that both road one and two has the same other constraint factors as well, like a pedestrian usage and geometric design and so what. And some, yeah. And the only difference between the two road is the PCI. So of course, road one has a much lowest PCI, which then restrict us to only use reconstruction versus road two has a PCI of seventy five, where we can still use a payment preservation or preventive method like chip seal. So once you plug those number into the equations, you can see on the right here, the cost benefit ratio of road two, which is at a higher PCI will be higher than that of road one. That means the system will prioritize fixing this road before it's going on to two road one. Really what this is based on this example, you know, considering all the same criterias, factors like ADT geometric usage and stuff like that, we can come to a conclusion that, you know, performing a preventive treatment will reduce the overall maintenance cost throughout the system and is a more effective way of utilizing our fun. The next item, so this is the optimized approach based on street saver. So we assume our current budgets of one point eight million dollars annually. In twenty twenty five, our PCI would have dropped to fifty nine. And on the right hand side, that's what our road network will look like in twenty twenty five. But also worth noting that based on the optimized approach, right? In that five year, again, the map on the right here is a preliminary five year plan that was extracted from street saver. It give you a breakdown of which road is repaired under what year. And again, just want to caution here, this is a very preliminary preliminary plan. But from that, you can see that at one point eight million dollars annually in five year, we will be able to maintain or treat a hundred and sixteen lane mile road. Unfortunately, because of this funding shortfall, our deferred maintenance cost will continue to rise and it will be at fifty five million dollars. Versus the next approach, the worst first approach, again, it is to prioritize street that has the lowest PCI, you know, street in our city would be something like Monterey by one to one, Lucesa, Rosy Lane, those street that are in a really low PCI. These streets typically are the ones that generate the most calls that we receive. And it also has the highest user cost, both for the city and the resident. We spend a lot of fun annually to go over new stopgap measure like pothole repair, striping and stuff like that. And it also has some user cost of resident as well as, you know, driving by poorly maintained road. That's usually incur cost. This, these kind of approach actually limits our ability to choose different type of treatment. Really, the only few treatment that can be used for this is major reconstructions or what we call a full depth reclamation. This is a recycling process, but in general, this is a very expensive treatment. This approach also sometime I hear a call up, don't fix it if it isn't broken approach. But again, it will consume the bulk of the budget. And if we already use the same budget at one point eight million dollars and then treat those road that are in the worst PCI, our our overall PCI by twenty twenty five will drop to fifty three. So it is much lower than they use the optimized approach. And then this next slide is really tell a big pictures. So you see from the previous slide that, you know, we'll be able to treat a hundred and sixteen lane mile road under the optimized condition of one point eight million dollars. Under the worst first approach, we would only be able to treat ten point nine one lane mile. And this is important because that mean all the other roads that are not treated will continue to deteriorate. So the the road that you were seeing in green will continue to degrade. And in five year, then we'll starting to become yellow and orange and and a set of. The next approach and last is the blended approach. So what we really want to bring your attention is that street saver also has the capability of combining the optimizations and also starting to hand picks the street that we've been receiving a lot of calls and know that it has the highest volumes and is in the poorest conditions. This approach. So in the next slide, we assume a three point five million dollars rather than a one point eight. And an asterisk on that or capital on that is that unfortunately, in order for us to be able to do reconstructions, the project has to be a certain size to be able for us to do it effectively. Typically, reconstruction road would be somewhere between one million dollars and above. And that's why if you want to have a blended approach, you typically would need a much higher budget in order to to do both of those in the same year. But as you can see, even though added added three and a half million dollar annual budget in twenty twenty five will have an average PCI of fifty nine. This is again, assuming a fifty fifty splits of, you know, one point eight and preventive and another one point seven in the worst first. So this next slide show you one of the five you plan that that will look like under this blended approach. And you can see on the brown sections here that some of those roads like Rosy Lane, Lucesa and Monterey does get inputted into the system and accounted for. And we also accounted for majority of the road that are in good conditions where we can still use preventive method. Again, at three and a half million dollar, our PCI in twenty twenty five will be fifty nine and a total treated lane mile under this fifty fifty split is a hundred and seventeen lane mile. So now that you understand kind of the the treatment plan and the different available strategies, we can then talk about funding sources. Typically for us, in order for us to use a funding for payment, we are tied to all these various funds. The first one that you are already familiar with is the SB one road maintenance and rehabilitation acts. Typically, we receive about nine hundred thousand dollars for that every year. And the second fund is the VTA measure B at the local street and road repair program. And we also has the highway or user revenue, which is the various gas tax and vehicle registration fee. And the last one is other general discretionary funds like the general fund and transportation grant. This tables here was taken from the five year CIP program that we recently adopted. This highlighted all of the fund that can be used for paving programs, the various gas tag, SB one measure B, transportation, vehicle registration fee. The total available fund here is about twenty point three million dollars. Under that CIP program, we have programming two payment projects. One is the Armored Parkway, that is two point two million dollars. And the annual payment maintenance project, which is a ten point five million dollars. Note that this year we have about three point two million dollars in paving. And then the next year and the following after that will be at a one point eight from measure B and SB one. So this accounted for twelve point seven million dollars out of the twenty million dollars available. The other seven and a half million dollars are tied to other transportation project. These are projects that are not related to paving. A few of those you have already seen, such as the regulatory sign replacement projects, the annual program, see by projects, the annual traffic signals and street light maintenance projects. So all of these sum ups to about seven and a half million dollars out of those twenty million dollar available fund. So with that, on the January state of the street, we did run these for a scenario for for council. The first one is for our one point eight million dollars per year. On the second one is what does it take, how much would it take to maintain our current PCI? That is three point five million dollars per year. And then the next one is what if we want to improve by five point from sixty two to sixty seven? How much would it cost? And that is three point nine million dollars per year. The last one is if we want to increase the seventy, what would it take? And that is six point seven million dollars per year. Now it's worth noting that all four of these scenarios are run under the optimized scenarios. This table kind of show you a breakdown of that and what is a shortfall if we are to move to the maintain current PCI or to increase it to sixty seven or to increase the seventy. This is shown here. But also I want to point out that deferred maintenance under our current budget, we have, we will have a deferred maintenance cost of fifty three million in twenty twenty five. And as you continue to increase that current budget, this deferred maintenance cost will shrink. And also you will see that the percentage of good street will also increase as your funding level increase. And this is just a graph showing that PCI. So again, at our current investment level by twenty twenty five will be at fifty nine. And if you want to stay constant, that will be at our sixty two here. And the other two scenario is to increase it by five to sixty seven or to increase it directly to seventy at six point eight million dollars. So with that, I'll go ahead and transfer it back to Gary to talk about the alternate funding sources.
Thank you, Neron, fantastic job. Also, the attachment to your staff report this evening was this document here, which was Gilroy's pavement management program has a lot of detail in it that Neron covered this evening. So that's, that's there for you to refer to and ask questions if you have those at the end of the evening. So these are some of the alternative funding sources. We've seen the funding sources and transportation that we have available to us. These are other possible funding sources that we can investigate, sales tax measures. We're always keeping our eye open for grants. There's the opportunity for maybe some general obligation bonds that we can look into and bring back information on if interested or those other discretionary funds like the general fund that council might provide direction to this evening. Next slide. So this is what we're looking for from council this evening. These, these two specific items, what approach should we be using to determine which streets to rehabilitate? That worst first option, the street saver recommendations is exclusively or a blended approach. And and staffs recommending that we look at some kind of a blended approach because without that, we're just never going to get to all the failed streets, the ones that are in really bad shape to generate the most concerns from our community. And then lastly, how much annual funding can be dedicated to our annual paving program? You know, are we looking at the continuing to use the one point eight million a year? And and we know what that does long term in the next five years and longer. Should we be looking to spend three point four six million to maintain the PCI at sixty two? Should we be looking to three point nine to try and get to that next level and increase the PCI by five in the next five years? Or should we be looking to try and expand or find a way to to spend that six point eight million to get to seventy in the next five years? And and of all those options, staff is recommending the three point nine million. So one of the things we'll talk about is that we're going, if that's the direction of council, we'll head back to the office. We'll see if we can find a solution or a way to get to three point nine million. And then we'll bring that back to you for just further discussion. So next slide. So again, once staff has received direction from council, we'll bring back that five year paving program. When we do bring that back, it'll include these items here, strategy that utilizes the funding available based on what you provide or what you'd like us to try and provide. The maps on an annual basis showing exactly what streets we plan to rehabilitate for the next five years of this program. And then we're also working on a website. We have a website right now, Smooth Streets website in our engineering area on the city's website, but expanding on that and adding maps and adding more additional detail. And so we'll bring back and walk you through that Smooth Streets website. What we'd like to do is again, based on your direction this evening, if you, if you, if you ask us to go back and find you the three point five of the three point nine, we'd like to go back and look how we can potentially do that, what projects we may or may not need to cut to get to that number or what other options that might be out there. And then bring back that funding plan to you in May. That will allow us then if supported by council to work that into the budget and bring that forward in June for our budget program. Once we have that direction from council, then we in July, we plan then to bring back that full five year plan, including the maps and including the website. So I believe next slide there, that is the end of the presentation. Thank you for being very patient. I know there was a lot of information there. We don't plan on having long presentation like this again. Next time we talk about paving, it'll be short and sweet and focused. So thank you again for your patience this evening. And Neron and I are both here to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, you guys say, thank you. That was very long. Yes, it was a lot of information. I don't know that it was as absorbed as well by the rest of us on the council as the two of you. You know, understand all that. I have lots to say on it, but I'll go to council first. So I saw council member Armendaris's hand first. Then I thought I saw council member Braco, is that no? Okay, so I guess Armendaris and then we'll go, oh, yes. Armendaris, Braco, Tovar, that's what I see right now. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. And that was a lot of information, but it was great and it was put together well. So thank you, staff. But my question is about how streets are prioritized and decided upon in terms of what year they'll be repaired? Because I was noticing, and I'll go to it. I don't remember what slide number it was, but in our packet, it's just, it's appendix C and it talks about the five year the program. And when I noticed the legend of the streets allocated for repair in this year, next year, and so on. I saw that the the bulk of those that are waiting till twenty twenty four are on the the southeast side of town where we have a lot of our older neighborhoods. And so it's, it, it feels like those on the northwest quadrant are set for repair in twenty two and twenty three ahead of the other ones. And so I'm wondering, have the streets on the east side been repaired on a more regular schedule or more frequent or more recently? Is that why they're put off till twenty twenty four? Because you figure like, you know, my instincts tell me, well, those are older streets, they're older neighborhoods. They're heavily trafficked, right? Have they have, they have heavy traffic, more cars in those neighborhoods because of the higher density housing and because more people live in the homes, right? Two or three families sometimes. So, so I'm wondering how that was that formula, how were those decisions made?
That's a great question. Yeah. Yeah. So when I was running this program, so kind of like what I explained early on is that the program will prioritize street that are in a good condition first. So the north west corner that you see are at a little, little, a little bit higher PCI level. And that's how the program prioritize that in the first two or three years. So as we run out of a road that are in good condition to spend the surface treatment or preventive treatment on, and then it start to really filter downs to the road that need rehabilitation. So those road that you see in blue are more rehabilitations, more like grinding overlay rather than a surface treatment. And that's why if you look in at the projected network with the tables right underneath that graphic, you'll see in twenty twenty four, although it is the same number of, of the same amount of budget, the total lane mile treated for that year is actually just half because those are going to rehabilitation projects.
So you want to protect the roads that are in better condition now, right? And then invest more in in the other roads later because they'll be in worse condition. Because they're already at a worse condition, right?
Yeah, you really want to spend money maintaining those, those, those streets in the upper range before they get down that curve. Keeping them in that upper range then allows you to spend less money than if they get further down and you're down the, you know, seventy to eighty dollars a square yard rehabilitation cost or reconstruction cost at that point. So that's what the program does, which we've been using is street saver directly. The street saver prioritizes those streets that are in good condition. And then once, like Neron said, once we start to run out of those streets, then it starts allocating additional funds for other streets that are lower on down the list that might be in the, in the poor or failed range. So, and that's why you see it kind of jump all over from year to year.
Council member, you're hitting on exactly the problem that that it is exactly the problem and why we need, we need to find a way to put more money towards our streets because the what we have been doing up until now is failing us. Because when you have such little, such a small amount that you're putting towards something that costs so much more, you're stuck just trying to keep the better streets in shape because that little that you have isn't nearly enough to repair the ones that are already in worse shape and continuing to get worse. So it's a huge, it's a huge problem and one that I don't think we can keep going the way we're going.
Right, but can you, but I'm sure you can see and empathize with those of us who live on that side of town.
No, that's what I'm saying. That's exactly what I'm saying is we need to put more money.
Counterintuitive, right? It's like, okay, we have it already bad. And so we have to wait till it gets worse while other folks don't have it as bad because we want to maintain, right?
I'm agreeing with her. It should not be that way. It should not be that way. But when you have only one point eight million dollars to pay, to pay for something that that you need ten million because the deferred maintenance is what keeps going up, you don't end up improving anything. Yeah. Because it's that one point eight isn't enough to repair the streets that have already declined so bad. That's the issue and it and the longer. Yeah, the worse it's going to get. Right? Okay, council member Braco.
I've heard these presentations so many times and it really doesn't seem like we ever actually do the work. We just talked about getting it done. It was over five years ago, I think I talked to Rick Smeltzer about San Ysidro Avenue, the main way out to the hospital. The Amos drivers have to hold the patient down on the gurney. The Amos drivers have to hold the patient down on the gurney because the potholes are so bad. And they were going to fix it that year. And every year since staff has says, oh, it's on the list to get done this year. Groom said it was going to be done last fall. It's still not fixed. And now I see it's not even on the list. And I think the money issue is a problem of our own making. Every time we get money from, you know, when Measure B passed, we took our existing money and moved it to something else. And then when we got the state money, we took money out and moved it to something else. You know, I I see on the list here all these different gas taxes, but they're being used for other things. I think we need to use our gas tax money and our registration money strictly for the streets. You know, staff is good at trying to play with wording and stuff so it fits the criteria to do a parking lot or do sidewalks or ramps, stuff that has nothing to do with the pavement management. So every time we've, especially when back in 2008, when the economy got bad, they used our street funding to balance the budget. And I argue then, that's not a balanced budget. You're not balancing the budget when you're not doing the things that you you should be doing. So I I'm for putting extra money towards the streets because they're just getting worse and worse. And, you know, our residents pay taxes and they they have certain expectations. And I think they need to see the streets being repaired, not just deteriorating year after year after year, you know, on 10th Street and Royal over there or Camino Royal, there's a a bush growing in the pavement. You know, and I was there that day. I see a city truck drive by. He sees it, you know, stop and take care of it. But, you know, and there's cracks and we're not crack sealing and everything's just getting worse and worse. And I I I think it's just going to continue because I haven't seen any effort on the city's part to to change and and get this fixed unless this council decides to get top and say, here's the money, make it happen, or there's going to be consequences. And that's the only way it it's going to, you know, I I live in the business world. You know, if I tell my employees I want something done and it doesn't get done, somebody's not going to have a job. And and sometimes I think you have to do things like that. Because I think we just get run over all the time as a council. Thank you.
Gary.
Do you mind me responding to some of that?
Not at, not at all. I I go ahead.
Before mayor, mayor, if I may, sorry, I had my hand up, but it went down before Gary.
No, Gary, Gary just wanted to respond to that. Is that okay, Fred? Are you? Yep. Gary, did you want to respond or do you want council?
And I apologize for interrupting a council member Brock. I just, there was a lot to unpack there and I wanted to to help you understand some of the stuff. When you look at the curb ramps and the curb ramps, we are spending money out of the transportation budget, but when anytime we do major paving or or overlay of a street, we have to do by law, we have to do the curb ramps. And so what we're trying to do with some of that money that we have is put in those ramps. And so we we actually let the contracts for paving, we don't have to spend paving dollars doing curb ramps because concrete work is much more expensive than paving work. So we try and get out in advance of those streets that we're going to be paving and have specific curb ramp projects, sometimes even a year in advance so that we can get out ahead of those projects. And so our our paving budget this year, we, you're on indicated, we do have a lot of money. This is a great example of a blended approach that we're taking this year. We're taking a significant amount of money and putting it towards our street saver approach. And we're taking a little bit extra, almost a million dollars, and we're building San Ysidro. So that's getting done this summer. That is actually getting constructed this year. And so when we we did the evaluation for that, the street section out there is very poor, it's very thin. And it's going to cost us, you know, some initial estimates, almost a million dollars to do that section of San Ysidro from Home Depot out to Noni Munno. And so you see, you know, when you, when you do something like that, how many other streets we could repair or rehabilitate with that million dollars? And when you take that big chunk of money and put it towards a street, you get that street fixed, but it takes away from that opportunity to spend that money throughout the entire city doing rehabilitation work. But just know that we are doing that this summer.
As we're doing rehabilitation work all around the city and our chip ceiling and all our regular maintenance, shouldn't we be taking it it picking some streets or or some criteria that we spend money every year on some of these major projects? So we start knocking them off off of the the list.
Absolutely. And I completely agree with you. And another example that while we're doing that or planning for that, and you saw the list that you're on, put up the Auto Mall Parkway project. That's something that we have planned, designed next year and construction the following year because we've got some additional gas tax funds that we have the ability to use. That is a failed street. That is a street that's in really poor condition and would never get repaired if we were just doing street saver. So we've identified that street, pulled it out, have planned for it, but we also have to save up for it because it's a big chunk of money. We realize it'll be great enhancement to the city and from an economic development standpoint. But it's something that, you know, we will be able with a blended approach to be able to do a major street every few years like Auto Mall Parkway or like the San Ysidro that we're doing this year. So yes, that is the plan. That's what we're recommending as staff to have a plan that is blended where you have street saver optimizing and doing the best you can, but also then taking a big chunk of money, you know, 25, 30, 40% of our annual budget and putting it towards fixing a failed street like a Luchoso or some of those other streets that you're listed.
And Gary, on the street saver maps, I see San Ysidro, Los Anamos from San Ysidro to the corner of Noni Munno, which is a little about 100 feet there. But it doesn't show Los Anamos going east to from San Ysidro to the county line. Yeah, some of the council members been in my house. My, that street is half dirt.
It's bad. Yeah, I agree. It's really bad. We've driven out there and
It's not on there. I couldn't find it.
Well, because it's got a very low volume of of traffic that actually uses it unfortunately compared to the rest of the city. And so when you look at the different criteria that Street Saver uses, it doesn't kick it out as a street that would rise to the surface, given the small amount of money that we have. The more money that we can put into paving, the broader we can look at in terms of fixing segments in the city. And that's where you would have a street like that coming.
So how how do they know what the traffic is? Because I've never seen them put a counter out here. And what happens is people take, they get off 101 to Buena Vista and come down and go down go down Los Anamos to get to 152 to avoid the traffic at 25 and 101 every night.
Right, right. Well, in terms of the counts, we did do a citywide count program. I think it was two summers ago before COVID. So we do have ADT for all streets within the city. Niran can talk more to that if you if you'd like to go.
No, we we need to give everybody a chance to speak. Yeah.
I'll talk to you offline about it, Gary.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, council member Tovar.
Thank you, mayor. No, and I mean, again, I'm going to reiterate a lot of what my colleagues are saying, especially you know, the things that Dion had mentioned in regards to, you know, pulling or pulling funds on and and utilizing it for streets, you know? Again, because I, and I'm sure we've all heard from concerned residents about their streets and sort of how some want to go out there and fix the potholes on their own because they they say it's never going to get fixed, you know, so I think we need to start really prioritizing funding fixtures of our streets, you know, and then what council member Armendaras mentioned earlier is very important. If you guys recall several years ago, we talked about we talked about this topic and how we were going to categorize and prioritize streets and those that need to be fixed. I came out and said, yes, I agree, but we also have to be we have to be equal in the in the way that we select streets, you know, from the east side to the west side. I understand there might be some more higher priority streets that need fixed, but I don't want to forget about both sides of town. You know, I think it's important that we continue thinking that way to say, okay, you know what? We go one here, one here, and we, you know, we're we're spreading it out equally because again, I don't want one group or one side of town to feel that they're neglected, you know, and again, so but it goes back again to like what what's just been said, you mean? Yeah, I don't see any grant money coming our way. I don't see any free money. I don't see any donors coming our way to help us with this. So we need to start utilizing some of those funds and and put them toward fixing our streets because as as we're talking, it's only going to get worse. And unless we do something now, we're going to be in worse shape later on. So I mean, I'm all in favor of that. And I understand we're very limited fund wise, but I think we need to start prioritizing this more more than anything else. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We're always limited fund wise. This position is because since 2012, we saw where we had a PCI that was much better. We have allowed and by we, it's been city councils. You can blame staff, but city council is who gives direction to staff. And Measure B was just passed in 2016. We didn't actually even get any money from Measure B until 2018. So if we're talking about that being a million of the 1.8 that we're using towards our streets now, then we absolutely did what council member Braco said, which is pull money that we were using for the streets as soon as Measure B gave us money to something else instead of letting Measure B add to what we were doing because the real crime, in my opinion, is to ever have not funded the streets to the level necessary to prevent them from declining further. You may not be able to build them back up, you know, yay for Arinda that they could do that. But we may not ever get it up there, but to continue to let it go down is so grossly unfair to many neighborhoods in the city and goes completely against what we all said is that our city services were going to benefit equally all neighborhoods of of the city. So when it comes to where we're prioritizing our money, because you know, we are going through a budget process now, I would like every council member to remember this. We need almost $4 million to go towards the streets to to help this problem that that we have gotten into since 2012. And in my opinion, you know, other than getting rid of furloughs and bringing our people back to work post, post pandemic, this takes priority even over trying to fund the increase in our in our purse liability. So I sure hope we all remember that. We were already in a financial crisis before the pandemic even hit. So, okay, before I do a second round with council members, could I go to the public? Or Rebecca, do you do you want to say something quick right now before I go to the public?
Just a quick question about grants. Do does any like federal or state offer or county offer any grants about for street and road repair or maintenance?
I'm not specifically aware of any that do, but we always keep our eyes open. There's always new ones out there. And so it's one of those things we'll we'll becoming aware of and and continue to ask around about.
Thank you.
Okay, Suzanne, can we go to the public, please?
Yes. If you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine now on your phone or raise your hand. It appears we have no public comment.
Okay, then back to council. Does anybody else have? Okay, council member Tovar.
Sorry, mayor. Gary, just sort of the question that was just asked in your response in regards to grants. Because obviously that was something that was listed on your your presentation. I understand you're saying that there isn't anything else that you know of. But again, it goes back to the importance of you know, us researching, looking, asking, you know, because again, I don't want this to be something that we label on there and then two months later, we forget about and then we're updated a year from now. Well, there's no grants out there. Can we have a constant update on if there's grants, any other source of funding? Because again, like the mayor said, you know, you're looking at four plus million dollars that we need to and for me, and just like others, this is a priority. But again, if there's other sources of funding, the more we know, the more updated we are about this and it helps shape sort of the decisions that we make later on. Because if there's nothing out there, then you know what? We're going to have to use the funds that we have or, you know, and but if there is, I would like to know that because that'll help me with my decisions down the road. But please, I mean, I ask that you continue to look and keep us updated on this and let us know when when and if there are any grants available.
Understood. Will do.
Council member Braco.
Yeah, I I would be for the blended approach where we're doing both the real bad ones and and the not so bad ones at the same time. And a couple of things I I would, I think, you know, we need to have a policy. I I would really like to see us have an incentive program for our people. If they go out and find us a million dollar grant, give them 5% or whatever. Give them that incentive to go out and hunt the stuff down because we we have in the past gotten a lot of stuff done with grants. And I really believe that the council needs to make it clear that if if we were to get a a $2 million grant to fix the roads, that the money that we already set aside stays there and gets work done instead of funneling it to something else. But I I think that needs to be our policy so that this, because it's, councils haven't taken care of it in the past and and this has problem has grown until we're at, we're we're sitting here again, talking about our streets. But I think that is one of the most important things we could do is make it a policy that any money extra we get is extra for the streets, not to take out something else. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Marks.
I really like what council member Braco said about rewarding and make it an incentive for any city employee who can find a grant. And I'd like to see the council get behind that and move that forward because there is a lot of grant money for a lot of our CIP projects and this is the way to go. And I don't think we take advantage of all the money that's out there. So I don't know if at a future meeting Monday night, we agendacize that for staff to look into this and make it a policy, but great idea.
Don't need to hire consultant. We can do it. We could do it on our own.
Exactly. Perfect.
Okay. Oh, I would just say that, yeah. It might be worth the investment in a grant writer because writing grants is not easy, right? Finding them is is easy, but writing them is really hard. But so incentivizing it or paying somebody, right? Usually that's how they work. The grant writer will pay themselves out of the money that they
Yeah, no, I would, I would, I would be if we were hiring a grant consultant, yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, those were actually my thoughts too, because I know like in our request to get FEMA money even, you know, for reimbursements for some of the money we were out of pocket for the Garlic Festival shooting, we didn't get any of that. You know, and whether or not it was in how it was written or, you know, I I don't know. But if it is, if we can, if you can get a grant writer that that is paid through the sort of like commission, right? They get a piece of the grant and it's not an out of pocket cost just to have a full time person maybe get a grant. I'm, I would certainly be okay with that, too. I don't know that I would want to wait though and rely on grant money. I think the situation with our streets is just something our residents shouldn't have to tolerate anymore, not at the level that we've been doing. We need to be transparent and let people know that whatever the street is, whether it's in their neighborhood, whether it's one they just have to travel to get to work, Luchoso or any other street, that street should be on a list for improvement somewhere, even if it can only be executed with funding. Right? It should still be shown that we are aware, that we know that the street is here and that this is how the program would work if we had this amount of money. So if the council made it a priority to add the 3.9 million dollars, for example, to streets, then any resident would could see the the plan for the next five years that would show them in a fully transparent way when any particular street is going to get addressed because when we can address streets, of course, staff can only tell us depending on the amount of money that we're funding. Because it's a very different story and it doesn't make any sense to use money for the 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 worst case approach, the worst street approach does not make sense. Yes, it would fix that street, but overall it fixes so little and then it so grossly increases our deferred cost of everything else. So you can't do it that way, even though intuitively you might think you can. So again, if if we could, you know, if we can find ways to save money in other places or with any money that we have coming in, we've lost a lot with with this pandemic. But in my opinion, this has to be right up there with getting our our furlough days to to go away and get our staff back and then tackle the roads. It's just something that our residents shouldn't shouldn't have to live with anymore. and then tackle the roads. It's just something that our residents shouldn't, shouldn't have to live with anymore. Anyone else have any comments?
Well said.
So are we pretty much a thumbs up then for the, uh, the three point nine million of additional funding? I mean, efforts to look for that and and a blended approach?
Yeah, I am.
Everybody? Okay, council member Hilton, you haven't said a word. Does that mean, what does that mean? Okay, that you're fine. Okay, well then that's the direction I I say we're giving. And I I realize that's gonna mean, uh, yeah, so so at least for me, even if we do things that that help us with our, our purse trust, I would understand, uh, I would understand using any kind of savings towards our streets first. Jimmy, your hand is up?
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. The direction that I'm, I'm hearing is that you're looking for a plan to increase streets funding from one point eight million annually to three point nine. And you're looking for staff to return with ideas and how we do that gap. Is that, is that accurate, Mayor?
Yeah, it, it, I think so. And I know that's, sounds really impossible.
No, nothing's impossible. I just wanna make sure that, I just wanna make sure that we're, we're talking about all this. But at the end of the day, we, we know it's money and that we need to find about two million dollars e- extra. And I can work on that plan. And that's what I'm just making sure that is the direction.
Yeah, I think so. I know there's lots of areas that we want money and everybody's had ideas and people have thrown out, you know, dibs on any kind of cash coming our way. But this is, this is something I'm happy to see, um, this council wanting to get addressed. Because we've seen how it is just getting worse and it is completely neglectful on the part of the city council to let this continue. Okay, great. Wonderful.
And then one last thing, if I can confirm, the blended approach is also what I think I heard from.
Yes, yes. Yes. So really, it's, it's what your staff recommendations were. It's just a matter of now what that means for for money. And obviously, it's gonna have to come from something that's, that's currently using money, right, to to pull away. Okay.
So we'll work with finance over the next couple of months and bring you back a plan in May, a funding plan that shows you how we get to three point nine and how that impacts some of the other things we do.
Yes, and then with that plan, Gary, would, yeah, it'll impact the other things that you do with, with, with the money that we can pull for this. And then with that plan, will, will you also be able to show us then, can residents expect then to see the timing of when all of the streets in the city will be addressed with that amount of money?
That'll be a phase two approach. That's what we'll bring back in July. What we need to do, we're working on in the next several weeks, uh, for this May presentation is, is how we actually make the numbers work and what we can adjust within our budget to have, to be able to spend three point nine for the next five years to be able to do what we want to do with our paving program. Uh, that's gonna then have an impact on on the city's budget, our public works budget. Uh, and then how we go ahead and and do the, the, uh, basically the line item budgets that we're doing right now. So that'll align very nicely so that when we do talk budgets, we'll have that plan in place. So in June, when we pass the budget, uh, then we'll have that plan, uh, realized.
Great.
Once we get that, then we'll start working on the maps, then we'll start working on the streets. But but understanding that that StreetSaver really, with confidence, can only look out about five years in advance because of there's so many other variables. Once you start getting past five years at that three point nine level, you're gonna end up with streets that are, we really are uncertain past that what we can actually do. To be able to get a full understanding of, of really all the streets within the city, you'd have to look at an optimized approach. And I think the number on that was six point eight million a year.
Yes, I know, I know. I would love that, but I, yeah.
Yeah, we all love that. Let you know that that's what it would really cost to do, be in five years to bring everything up where everything is addressed. What we can do though is we can certainly tell you with the blended approach over the next five years, exactly what streets are gonna be, uh, paved and what streets are gonna be rehabilitated, including some of these worst streets in the city. Uh, and then what, what, uh, what the optimization with the remaining funds will do or the majority of the funds actually uh, using StreetSaver and how we'll be able to really provide equity throughout the city on, on a, on an average basis with the StreetSaver.
Okay, this may be a silly question and maybe council member Braco even already knows the answer because he's been on the council as long as he has. But when Measure B passed and we got that, uh, million dollars from Measure B, what did we divert the million dollars that we worry? I mean, what were we using for our streets? In other words, I I'd like to just know what money got, how much and to what got diverted when Measure B came in?
Well, when, back when, uh, Jay was the city manager, every street in.
Go on way back.
Yeah, back then, every street in Gilway got a chip seal every seven years. And the streets were good and stuff. And then after he left, then we had the downturn in two thousand eight. And they took all the money from the streets except three hundred thousand dollars and diverted it to other places. So i- i- we've never, we, we've added a couple of times, but for a one-time deal. And we need to make it where it has set funding every year to get it done.
Wow. So here's where we are. Like I said, I'm very happy to see the whole council wanting this addressed. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you as well.
Okay, are we, is, is that it? That is it? Everybody have a great, Andy, good night?
Good night.
All right. Good night, everyone. Good night, good night, folks.